Good evening, welcome to the workshop meeting for Pasco Council this evening of June 24th, 2019. We have agendas available in the back or corner of the desk over here if you'd like to follow along, or a more detailed council packet is available in advance through the city's website. We also broadcast the meeting through that website as well as Charter Cable Channel 191, and also even on Facebook Live. If you get a chance to speak with council, you come to the podium up here and if you share your name with us, we'd be thankful for our record-keeping. And if you have any cellphones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And with housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Watkins.
Here.
Seven present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is verbal reports from council members. I know we have a bunch of reports tonight, looking forward to this section. Who would like to start? And Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that this weekend, there was the Juneteenth event that Mr. Council Member Alvarado and I attended, and Dave was there, and it was, you know, it was very, very fun. There was quite a bit more activity than I remember it being last year, and I just want to thank all the officers that were able to help us make it happen. I know there was a little issue with timing and having enough support, but we made it happen and we were able to get them to proceed with their activities. And then we, after the parade that they had, it was a big function over at Martin Luther King Center, and I'll tell you what, there was, I don't know, several hundreds of people there, and it was just a beautiful event. Everything went without incident that I'm aware of, and it was just a fun time that I was able to share with everybody at that event. So I want to thank Mr. Edmonds and all the people that put that on and made it happen. There was also a lot of activity downtown that day with the farmer's market going on, and it was also events over at Cool Desert Nights. So there was all kinds of stuff happening here in the Tri-Cities, and we're just pleased that we can have these functions for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Other reports? Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, very busy week indeed. We did have Juneteenth, and I was very lucky to sit next to a gentleman who told me a lot about history that I was not aware of. Pasco told me about past council members that had made a big mark in our city in years prior, so it was very enlightening, but also very, just good opportunity to celebrate the African-American community in our city and just the deep roots that they have here and just all the contributions that they've made. Also, I attended Good Roads. We met in Walla Walla this week, last week, and we had a presentation from Mr. Pinder from BF Cog. And so some of the conversations we're talking about at Good Roads is how do we use some of the information that they get at BF Cog so that we could come up with a very well-vetted list to bring to our legislators? And then later on Friday, I did attend BF Cog meeting, and so there, lots of issues there, but one of the biggest things is how do we keep our region from becoming a region of non-attainment when it comes to smog, and so what that would entail, so hearing a lot about that. And then I also was able to attend the Mariachi &amp; More Festival, a festival that the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce put together, and that was just fantastic. They brought a world-class Grammy Award-winning band called La Santa Cecilia, and just people were not, you know, were sitting down and just having a good time. By the end, everyone was dancing. It was just such a great memory of the community, just came together and had a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, and Ms. Brajas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that there was a delegation that went to Denver, Colorado, and Mayor Brechtam was there, Mr. Maloney was there. We were, we shared some of our highest, oh, there's a picture. We shared some of our highest, very proud projects that we're working on here in Pasco. We shared these with, what was it, over 500 people that, states that, sorry, different cities that participated and applied for this. Out of that, we were top 20. Out of that, well, Mr. Maloney will tell you a little bit more about that. We were just proud to be able to represent Pasco, to be able to represent the many organizations that are working together in collaboration to help our residents, to help those that are unfortunate and do not have the resources, do not have the means to get by. And so Pasco is working together in these, with these organizations again, to improve the quality of life of our residents. So Mr. Maloney, I'm sure he'll share a little bit more, but thank you, just wanted to share that. Thank you to the staff, thank you, Richard, you did great. Angela, thank you so much for all your support.
Our second attendance at All-America City. Mr. Maloney, would you tell us more in detail about it?
Yes, and Ms. Brajas, I certainly feel your exhaustion. It was a long weekend. It's a great conference, a lot of interactions, and I'll tell you what, it takes a lot out of us to go up there and do a presentation like we did, and then come up just a little bit short. It's hard, it's hard. But, you know, for those of you who weren't paying close attention to what this was, is we had an opportunity to apply as one of the top cities in America, and what the goal of this is, they call it kind of like the Olympics of municipal government. And so this, so what happened for us is basically, we'll say we got the silver medal, and one of the speakers said, getting the silver medal is the absolute worst. You get the gold medal, you're happy, obviously, you're through the roof. You get a bronze medal, you're just glad to have beat the rest of the crowd. You got a silver medal, you're peeking at the gold going, man, if I had just gone a little further. But we had, silver's pretty good. Silver is good, silver is good. And next week, I'll think that, too. You know, we had some great partners through this. So with Tri-Cities Community Health, for example, we had Gabby who came up, and she was like a shot of espresso when she's presenting. It was like, she started talking, and she started talking about how one of the participants in their diabetes prevention program was using the elliptical machine, and she's up there in front of these judges just going crazy, and it was fantastic. Or Victoria and Chris, two of our CBC students that was there to help present on the pantry that they have, the food pantry they have going at the community college level. These are amazing future leaders for us, they were just stellar. The awards is part of it. Winning or even being a finalist is something that's amazing to have an opportunity for. But we got to hang out with 19 other municipalities or counties that are absolute top-notch in this country, and hear how they helped solve some of their health issues within their community. I mean, you had like Doral, Florida, who passed through a citizen vote, $150 million bond for parks, to build parks, because they had a goal of having parks so dense within their community that everyone had easy access to them. Or Cornelius, Oregon, which is right outside of Portland, they built a library with low-income senior housing on top of it as the second floor. So can you imagine how that affects the loneliness of those who are aging in our community, who maybe would otherwise be at home or completely isolated from the community? That's a major health equity issue. So very interested to see how that does. They just got it built this year, I'm going to be tracking that very closely to see if that's the sort of model that would help us in this community. So anyways, I just, to echo what Ms. Brajas said, the delegation was fantastic. I'm very proud of Pasco and what we're doing. We didn't do a single one of these projects for this competition. We did them all because they're the right things to do for our community, and if they happen to be recognized nationally, then great. If not, I'm still really proud of Pasco and what we're doing. So thank you all, delegation and community, for your support in all this. So round of applause for maybe everybody here.
And we've also seen some pictures of you holding this plaque on behalf of Pasco, so another top 20 finish, two in a row. And I have a feeling we'll probably be checking what the category is for next year, see if that's something Pasco might want to participate in again.
They already announced it, and I believe the applications are going up soon. I'm sure staff will be looking into this as soon as Angela's had a nap.
And you want to bring us to close on All-America City, Mr. Mil?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say, you know, Mr. Mahoney and Blanche both brought it, I mean, they basically told all the details, but I did want to say that on the delegation, that it was, everybody gave their all. I mean, it was, nobody left anything on the table. I mean, it was, everybody was all in, and I was just so proud. I mean, I thought for sure we had it, and it seemed like we had it, but it just wasn't in the cards, and I'd just say, I was just really proud to be part of this group, and just all the hard work and effort and just everything that went along with it, it was just amazing. So thank you.
And Mr. Serrano, other things going on in the community this past week?
Sure, I'll be the wet blanket not talking about something exciting. Today, I attended a Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Committee meeting where we actually talked about loaning the Port of Pasco money for some land acquisition, which, I mean, to me is pretty exciting, but I'm a nerd, so it is what it is, the shoe fits. We also talked about some other investments in the community to move. Again, the goal of that committee is to move away from Hanford-centric business centers, and I think we're trying to move that dial bit by bit with the money that we receive, ironically, from Hanford. So there you have it.
Well, I'm willing to pair that because with this community, there's more than one thing going on at a time, and I was not able to do attend some other things I participated in. I've been participant in what's called the Iron Butt Rally over the years, and I think I've shared with community and council members, and it had checkpoints here, so we had 100 scavenger hunt motorcycle riders in the Tri-Cities, and Sacagawea Park was actually a bonus location, part of a larger thread. So I did that this weekend, and it's always great having a contingent of seven to represent various things, because we know that more than one thing happens every week in this community. So those are the verbal reports from council members. We're going to move on to Section 4 on the agenda. The first item is going to be a fireworks update, getting ready for the Fourth of July. I believe there's a, Mr. Assistant Chief Captain Rosky is going to present, no, we're going to go straight to Captain Harpster. Deputy Chief, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I'm just going to take a couple minutes of his thunder and introduce two of our newest police officers to you. They just graduated from the police academy, and so two of the finest, newest and finest Pasco police officers, David Dilsworth and Conrad Christiansen, come to you after graduating last week from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. As you know, that's 19 weeks long, just shy of five months, and they have put their all into that, and now we've got them back here in our training program, and they are actually on the streets now, out working and protecting our communities. So I just wanted to be sure and introduce them to you.
Welcome. And Mr. Maloney has a comment about this.
So one thing I want to say, given that we have some of our state legislatures and legislators in attendance, is, I know we'll talk about this in a little bit, but that Basic Law Enforcement Academy and being able to increase the number of classes was something that just got passed this year, so hopefully we'll be able to make sure that we won't be sitting with empty slots where we should have officers. So that was one of the exciting things we were able to get done. I know we'll talk about that a little later on, but this is a good time to also bring up that we have our state legislators also have our back on this. Thank you.
And thank you for your patience, Captain Harpster. You're going to tell us also about Fourth of July and police response.
Good evening, yes, I will. So as you all know, we have Fourth of July coming up, and that always brings out fireworks. So we'll start out with what is legal here in Pasco. Hopefully you can see this graphic that is displayed here, but basically what the state fire marshal has said, okay, these are legal fireworks besides any kind of mortars, that's what the city of Pasco has deemed is also legal. And then it also has when fireworks can be used on there, and that's going to be June 28th through the 5th of July, and there's times that are associated with that. So some of the things that we're doing in the police department to educate our community about the changes that have happened here in the city in the last couple of years with fireworks, going from not being able to use fireworks at all to now having some access to fireworks, is we did a live, our deputy chief actually did a live on-air interview at KLN A Radio discussing some of those points. And then we also will be starting a social media campaign beginning on the 28th of June, when they're legal to start using again this year, and that'll both also be in English and Spanish, and it will run through the Fourth of July. So just as a point of reference, talking about how busy the police department is on any given night, this is just a random night in the summer with calls for service, and you can see, it goes up and down just depending on the time of night or the time of year, whatever day that is. This happened just to be, like, the middle of August is a day I chose. And you can see, it's pretty random, it's not always the same, but last year we saw about 38 calls for service between 7:00 in the evening to 1:00 in the morning. Okay? So how does that, what happens on the Fourth of July? Here is a display of what has happened historically over the last several years, and in last year, again, if you were to take the amount of calls for service above that gray line, which is the fireworks calls, it's about the same as what we typically see, but then you're also adding in close to 90 calls for service just related to fireworks calls. So we're having to deal with our regular calls for service plus the other calls for service as well, and so you're almost at 150 calls for service during that same time period. So as you can see, it's a very busy night for us. Last year, as a historical reference, the fire department, this is their highlights during the 24 hours, beginning 8:00 in the morning on Fourth of July, they had 42 total incidents with 17 natural cover and trash fires, two building fires, one resulting in improper disposal, one was from illegal fireworks. 14 EMS incidents, one mutual aid call for Richland Fire and EMS, that was a commercial fire apparently, and seven other incidences, and then also one cooking fire. So this year, last year was our education year. We did write some fireworks infractions. There are civil infraction, that's a $250 infraction, and we wrote, I think, about seven of them last year. Those are ones that were deemed to be, that were severe enough that we wanted to make sure that the message got across, and then also, but this year is an enforcement year for us. So we will be stressing enforcement to our officers. To do that, we have specific fireworks-related, or fireworks patrols, we'll have officers the July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd that will just be out looking for fireworks calls and answering those and looking for enforcement to take place. And that'll be from 3:00 in the evening till, in the afternoon till 11:00 in the evening. And just as other things, just to show you what else is going on in the city that day, we have the parade the morning of July 4th. We have eight officers, regular officers, nine reserve officers that will be working that parade detail in the evening. Then we have the stadium, out at Geesa Stadium, which is five officers and then five reserve officers. And then, of course, we have events happening down at Wade Park on the river because of the display there on the river. Three officers will be working that, regular officers as well as four reserve officers. In addition to that, we have our normal patrol. So our patrol shifts will run, and this is all week, this standard staffing, 3:30 in the evening to 9:30 at night, we'll have one supervisor and eight officers, and then the next, our graveyard shift comes on at 9:30 in the evening and runs till 2:00 a.m. or until 2:00 a.m. They go until 8:00 in the morning, but during that 2:00 period, there'll be a total of two supervisors and 13 officers on. So we'll definitely have plenty of staffing, plus additional staffing to address any kind of fireworks issues, as well as the probably close to 150 calls for service that we're going to receive. Fire department will also be staffing up that evening. They're going to be staffing pretty heavy on the Fourth of July, they're going to be with additional staffing on three wildland units that they have. They're going to employ a tactic, basically, of a heavy equipment boss, which will then escort a road grader to establish fire line wherever that's needed. That grader, road grader is being provided by our Public Works Department and also be staffed by a public works employee. Franklin County Fire District 3 is also going to help out, they have a wildland unit that they're going to staff for us, fill in some of those gaps that were noticed last year by the fire department to really try to attack some of those areas. And then some of the other things, one of the other things that the fire department works on during this time period is with our code enforcement officers, and that's inspecting the fireworks stands for general safety and then also for fire safety. And that's it. That's the plan for fireworks this year. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
Starting with Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You stated that it's going to be an enforcement year?
Yes.
I've now stated that, that's two. Can you please make sure that the Facebook posts indicate that?
We will do so.
And talk about kind of the difference of what it could be to result, obviously you can't lay out every infraction, but I think the more that the public is informed, and, you know, we're over a week out, you're going to start the social media campaign about a week in advance, the more notice that people have, then it becomes their option to break the law. And helping them recognize what's within the realms of legal and not, and then again, stating that it is in fact an enforcement year, letting them know that you're on high alert. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We can do that.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I certainly appreciate seeing the data. It seems like we did have an uptick, but it kind of goes back to the 2015 numbers, so, you know, I don't know if that's, we have enough years to see if our action that we took last year, you know, has made things better or worse. Do we have any details on the building fires that happened, and do we know data from years past of how many building fires we had? I don't know if that's too...
I don't have that information myself.
That might be something that I...
I think Chief Gear actually was...
Oh, right.
Quick response, Mr. Chief?
Well, I've slept since then, but one of the, neither building fire was very significant, both of them were just damage to the buildings. Historically, we don't see as many building fires as we used to see back in the 90s, 80s and 90s. It's, for whatever reason, I don't know what that reason is, but I think it's elimination of a lot of the stuff that leaves people's hands. You know, the safe and sane fireworks that are there, I feel if they're done correctly, we're going to reduce that, although one of the fires was the fact that they had disposed of safe and sane fireworks in their garbage can right after setting them off, and it's kind of like putting hot barbecue briquettes in your garbage can and burn your garage up, or, which happens just, you know, happens quite often. So anyway, neither were serious. We always keep our fingers crossed because there really is very little mutilate available, unless it's something really significant. The only reason we did one last year was a commercial fire in Richland. For a normal house fire, we probably would not have been able to assist them.
Do you feel like we saw any kind of change, or kind of a typical year?
Well, we saw some use of the safe and sane stuff. I certainly saw people using those, and we really, I don't, other than the illegal disposal, I don't think we had a fire, Ben, you remember, did we have a fire from any of the legal fireworks? I don't, I don't think we were ever able to trace any fires to the legal fireworks. You know, most of the fires we get are vacant fields where there's nobody around, they're not in the driveway in a cul-de-sac, they're drive down the road, or you shoot them across the street into the field, stuff that's not legal, and that's what the bulk of our fires are.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to seeing the data on the post on the Fourth of July. Thank you.
I also echo Mr. Serrano's thoughts in that standard in which, you said about seven were written up in 2018, that crossed a line that was probably a pretty egregious, and if the police see it or know about it, I think that also council, is there always that balance? We're a country founded on liberty, but we also don't want to burn down our neighbors' fields or houses. So we appreciate you helping us find that line and making it a safe and reasonable Fourth of July, but also folks that get a little out of hand, help us remind them that they need to think about their neighbors. We do appreciate that. Other thoughts, Mr. Mil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Captain Harpster, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say thank you for working with council. I look forward to doing a police ride-along on Fourth of July night, and I want to see for myself how it goes, and I just really appreciate you working with my request, and I look forward to seeing how this goes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Captain. All right? Thank you. And with that, we're done with Section A, we go to, we're going to go to Item B, and we're going to do a legislative wrap-up, and just before I start that, I just do also want to note, we do have two legislators this evening, Representatives Walsh and Representative Jenkin, and my first recollection, and, oh, excuse, I knew Maureen when she was an aide, and then a representative, and now a Senator, excuse me, Senator Walsh, I apologize, so Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin from the 16th District, and they're also going to get a chance to speak this evening, and we welcome you to our council meeting this evening. And with that, well, we have 2019 legislative wrap-up, and is Dave kicking this off introductions to our legislative assistants?
Yeah, I will do that. So while Josh makes his way up, council, I think with the whirlwind we had at the end of session, you're well aware, our session ended April, and prior to session, council had adopted, I think, a very aggressive legislative agenda, which was executed, I think, with some pretty good success. We didn't get everything we wanted, but I think we were very successful and got some of the big items that council's been working on for a number of years. Big part of that success is having a presence on the ground and working that issue every day. So now enters Josh Wees from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. Josh is our presence, along with Trevor, Justin, and Brianna Murray, they're our presidents in Olympia, and both of them, I'll note, I was going to note Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin as well, because a big part of our success is having champions, and I don't think we had two better champions this last session than the senator and representative in the audience tonight. So got a lot done, and here to talk a little bit about that and some pre-planning for next session.
Good to see you, Josh.
Thank you, good to be here, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I'm Josh Wees with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. As Mr. Zabel noted, I'm your representative in Olympia for the legislative session, your presence on the ground. I really have three points or three main objectives for the presentation tonight. One is to just briefly go over how the session went and how your priorities went. A component of that, probably the most important component of that, is to heap a lot of praise on Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin, Representative Root as well, who couldn't be here, he's out of state for pre-plan, but he had a lot to do with that as well. And then third and final objective really is to begin the process, just of having you think about the 2020 session coming up, and how do we want to approach that and the dynamics there. So just in terms of overview, this was the 105-day, it was the long session of the biennial legislative process, and I can tell you, attest to you, for legislators here, they spent some very, very long nights, unusually long, the time that I've spent in Olympia, they spent more long nights than I've seen in a long, long time. So that word has a lot of meaning, I think, this year. The primary objectives for legislature were to adopt their operating capital and transportation budgets for the biennium. They did that, and they did it on time, which if you pay attention to legislative issues, as I know you all do, that's really one of the first times that's happened in quite a few years. So from kind of the big-picture perspective, it was a successful legislative session. One of the more controversial aspects of it was that in order to get out of town balancing their budgets, they raised about $800 million in new revenue, a combination of a variety of B&amp;O tax increases, also moving the state real estate excise tax from a flat rate over to a graduated rate, and then also increasing the hazardous substance tax, which is a capital budget resource. This year was a major component, major reason, that their transportation budget was able to balance as well. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. There were a record number of bills introduced this year, over 2,000. I feel like every year I give one of these reports, I say the same thing, we had a record number of bills this year. We had a record number of bills this year. That really is the case. We just see more and more. This year was a little bit unusual because there was a fairly high passage rate. About 22% of the bills introduced actually made it to the governor's desk. If you think about that, however, that's little less than a quarter of the bills that are introduced that we spend time reading and testifying on and obsessing over. Only about a quarter of those actually make it through the process. So, lots of, lots of activity, sometimes not a lot of result. I think Mr. Zabel alluded to this already or said this already, a very successful legislative session for the city, and we'll congratulate you on that. Your legislative priorities, I'm not going to go through every one of these. And in fact, I should say, this is a fairly abbreviated presentation to what I usually do. I'm going to go a little bit quicker because we do have the legislators here. If you have questions, please introduce me, please interrupt me at any time. I'm happy to, happy to be interrupted. Some of the items I put in a category called "more work ahead," things that we need to be thinking about for the 2020 session or maybe the future beyond 2020. We had requested transportation resources for the Lewis Street overpass. One of the reasons, I didn't go into a lot of detail about the transportation budget, there were not a lot of resources, a lot of not, not a lot of new projects funded in the state this year. That was primarily because there was a shortage in the projected gas tax revenues that the legislature was expected to receive. They really just didn't have many resources to be doing new projects. You saw, there was a lot of discussion about new transportation revenue. The Senate did see a proposal for new transportation gas tax as well as carbon tax package that would have funded a lot of new projects across the state. That made it a lot further, I think, than many of us expected it to, but ultimately was not adopted. And so, one of the things to be thinking about for 2020, maybe for 2021, are the city's transportation priorities. Is Lewis Street still something that you would like to put forward? Because within the next year or two, it would not surprise me at all if there were another revenue package that actually does get across the line. It is clearly an item of significant legislative interest. And if nothing else, the dialogue around Senator Hobbs' transportation package this last year demonstrated that there is a significant need across the state for new investments in transportation. The process water reuse facility, we're looking for additional investments in your process water reuse facility. The capital budget, there was pretty significant new expenditures this year at the state level. However, the requests for new funding outpaced the available resources by about 10 to 1. So, for every dollar available that they actually could spend on capital projects, I'm sorry, for every $10 that were requested, there was only $1 that was available, just not a lot of capital budget resources. $3 million capital budget request was a very, very large request. In fact, I have not gone back, but I know that when we were talking to the 9th District, their reaction to this was they would only have about $3 million to spread across the entire 9th District. Infrastructure funding has been on your legislative agenda as a standing item. This refers both to the Transportation Improvement Board, but also the Public Works Assistance Account. Those state-based infrastructure funds, I put this on the "more work ahead" solely because of the Public Works Assistance Account. All of the other infrastructure funds were fully funded. Public Works, we continue to see resources pulled out of that into the education legacy account. That is primarily because of the state's McCleary obligation. This year, we also saw an additional $21.5 million dedicated to expanding broadband connectivity across the state. That clearly was a priority of the governor and the legislature this year. Unfortunately, they did take existing Public Works dollars to do that. So, I would expect to see cities from across the state continuing to talk about and complain about how the Public Works account is being used for non-infrastructure or other infrastructure programs. Lower Snake River dams, the governor had proposed a study on the impacts of removing Snake River dams. City of Pasco opposed that. We did weigh in on that. The final budget includes a proviso, which has a, basically a stakeholder group being pulled together to talk about the possible ramifications of that. It's not technically a study, it's more of a stakeholder process, but still, I think from the city's perspective, it was not a win to see the state investing additional resources in that process. And finally, on the economic development tools, we had supported Senate Bill 5564, which was the Association of Washington City's request for a new city-based economic development tool. That did not move forward. That is something, again, as we're talking about the 2020 session, I know AWC will be making this a priority again, and we should discuss whether or not that continues to be a priority for the city. So, that's kind of the downer slide. Here's the upper slide. We had a lot of wins this session, and the first slide should not convince you otherwise. First and foremost, obviously, it seems to me like the City of Pasco's mantra ought to be "the third time's a charm." And that's what I'm hoping when you go back to the All-American Cities this next year, that you receive the gold medal, not the silver, third year in row, because it took us three years to get the PFD bill through. And this one, I obviously say "we" because I really just came in at the tail end here of the third year in trying this. Representative Jenkin, Senator Walsh have really been pushing this for the full time. And I think you're all aware of just how hard of a push this was. Really appreciate you coming over and advocating on that. Want to make sure that that effort was not lost. We say a lot about our legislators, we should say a lot about that, but advocacy really is a partnership, and we appreciate you spending the time on that. Multiple trips over, we know. Peanuts Plaza, we were hoping for a bigger investment here, but given the capital budget scenario, we were very pleased to receive $154,000 for Peanuts Plaza. Very much excited to see how this moves forward and how it affects the downtown of the city. That's an exciting, exciting project. I should mention, you know, we focus on Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin for the PFD bill. They were also the prime champions for the funding on this in the capital budget. Basic Law Enforcement Academy, Councilmember Maloney mentioned this earlier, very pleased to see the additional investment in the Basic Law Enforcement Academy funding. We now believe that the 540 training slots that we have over the biennium should be sufficient to keep up with the backlog that we have across the state. Two of those slots, I should note, are earmarked to be conducted in the Spokane area, so some recognition for the need for Eastern Washington dedicated slots. And hopefully, this will resolve the issue, at least for the short term. Defending local control, nothing significant passed this year. There were several bills that we weighed in on your behalf relating to accessory dwelling units, mandated cities, how they regulate accessory dwelling units, density and how you, mandating actions that you take within your incorporated areas to encourage density. All of those were either defeated or were passed in a way that don't have mandates in them. So, that really was a major win and something that we obviously worked very closely with the association on as well. So, really, this is where I jump off and get to say, you know, we have some thanks to give. It's a great place to be, to be able to say thanks, and very glad that Senator Walsh and Representative Jenkin could be here. You know, Mr. Mayor, I know her as Mo, so certainly no embarrassment there.
And we know she also has a grace and style to her. She's fine with that, too, as well.
Absolutely. Before I sit down, any questions?
No questions?
Okay.
With that, Senator Walsh, we'd love, we'd love to hear from you, your thoughts on the legislative session.
All right. My thoughts on the legislative session. Don't get me going. It was a tough one. I think politically, it was a very tough session, and that's, that's never pleasant. And I think when we go over there, we like to think that we can come together and work on issues that are sort of all of Washington issues, if you will. And I know for years, you know, a former seatmate of mine, Bill Grant, used to always say, "We're one Washington, one Washington," and he'd fight every year to make sure that Eastern Washington was recognized and got its proper, if you will, every legislative session. And that's a tradition we have always tried to uphold. Unfortunately, you know, when the politics come in and you begin to feel like your way of life in Eastern Washington is attacked a little bit by your colleagues in the legislature, you know, typically Democrats from the big cities, and they just don't really have that great understanding of what it means to live in Eastern Washington. And so, as a result, when you don't understand something or you're not knowledgeable about something, you tend to, you know, just dispense it. And I think that that is something that happened this year. That was an unfortunate consequence of the politics of the session. So, and I know there's a lot of trickle-down, "I can't handle Donald Trump" politics going on over there, but, you know, many of us don't really want to associate ourselves with the federal government. We're working on the behalf of the state of Washington, and we really like to be able to work together. And I just didn't feel like that dynamic was as strong as it has been in the past. So, and I'm not just saying that because we were in the minority in all three, you know, the governor's mansion and both the House and the Senate. It was just, it's the fact of the matter is, we just had folks that came in sort of high on the horses. There were a few players that were sort of called out for saying things that were not very diplomatic, if you will. And again, that doesn't bode well for the state of Washington. I've always kind of prided myself on being very bipartisan. So, that would probably be my disappointment of the session. Other than that, the fact that we got out on time, always a good thing. The fact that we were able to bring home some capital budget projects and be able to do some good things for the district. You know, unfortunately, the caveat with that is that they had to pass additional taxes, which frankly, many of us did not feel were warranted or necessary. And, you know, we're looking at a $52 billion budget, biennial budget now for the state of Washington. And I think when I started working there, we were under $20 billion bucks. So, I've been there a long time, but not enough to exponentially increase a budget that amount, and it was an incredible increase this year. You know, good things, and you love to be able to talk about all the good things that we're able to do in the state, but on the other hand, one of the best things we can do is help our taxpayers keep some of their money and be able to spend said money. I've already heard from some folks in the tri-cities who are very upset about the fact that they did away with the tax exemption for Oregon. That's been an issue that I've been dealing with. And, you know, just, all in all, again, you know, it's sort of a double-edged sword this year. There were some nice things that happened, but then again, some other things that many of us felt were not warranted or necessary. And I'm very hopeful that that will become apparent and that we'll be able to go back in a supplemental budget year and perhaps try to, you know, be restrained in any additional spending, because we really frankly shouldn't need anymore. You know, at some point, people have to tighten their belts with their budgets at home. We should be doing that on the state level, and unfortunately, that sort of was not the atmosphere. Other than that, glad to be home, glad to get some flowers in my pots on my porch, and was just home visiting my parents back in Cincinnati, Ohio. They're 87 years old, and we just got them into assisted living, so I was kind of contending with, you know, you have a life outside of the legislature. Sometimes folks don't believe it. My partner Jim, for example, I think he sort of shakes his head and says, "Why do you do this?" But, you know, I think probably the thing that I would like to recognize more than anything here tonight is, I mean, Bill and I do our thing over there. We love doing it, but we would never be able to do it without our staff. And I just want to point out, my staff is Jan Swenson, who you all probably know. She worked for Representative Haler for many years. And when Skylar ran a couple of cycles ago, she came in and filled in for him. He was not successful in his campaign, came back and worked for me. And then, when he did win his last election, Jan came and worked with me again. I love having her. She's great, and she knows everybody. And I thought I didn't, but she knows everybody. Brendan Rexes, you folks probably know him or his family here in town as well. He came over. He was stellar on my staff this year. And once in a while, I do controversial things that cause us to get a lot of correspondence to the office, and these guys were stellar, just handling, doing some troubleshooting. And I just, I want to thank them so much, because without them, we would all be lost. And of course, everybody knows Marge Plumage, and I'm a little remiss in introducing her because she actually belongs to Bill now, but Marge worked for me for 10 years as well, and we kept her in the 16th District because she's knowledgeable and knows her stuff. And again, you guys are so fortunate, not only to have some tenure with your legislators, but indeed to have tenure with your staff, maybe even more importantly. So, I just want to recognize them, and please, let's give them some applause, because they do great work for me.
And Senators Walsh, perspective and color is always interesting and welcome. And Representative Jenkin, you too, sir. Thank you. You're also, have done a tremendous amount of work with us, for us, and we appreciate that.
You bet. You bet. Before I start, I want to congratulate you guys, all of you, for All-American City in silver medal. I mean, silver, whatever they call that. That's fantastic. I mean, that, that is something to be proud of, and that's bragging rights. So, thank you. That makes our district even, even feel better. So, we're proud of you. I, and thank you. Thank you, Maureen, for introducing staff. We are very fortunate, we're very fortunate to have and utilize our staff. That's what they're there for, is for you guys to utilize them, and our district does a good job. That's where we really find what our bills are, you know, what to do with our bills. We don't dream the bills up ourselves. We have to have somebody call the office and let us know, like on the motorcycle bill. Somebody, two people in the same week called, and they, they had both been damaged by uninsured motorists. Lo and behold, I didn't know that motorcycles didn't need to have insurance, and sure enough, we were able, we were able to get a bill through this year to require minimum liability insurance on motorcycles. Now, I'm pretty conservative. I don't like regulations and all that, but that's common sense. So, that type of thing, by constituents calling, it gets the ball rolling. So, that's, that's an important thing. And first and foremost, before I get into, to the session, Maureen did a fantastic job with, with talking about how the session went. I'm not going to overview that. I'll do, I'll talk about a few specifics. But, Maureen, we are a team. We, and Skylar, we, we're a team. We're, it's just not Senator Walsh and then Representative Jenkin and Representative Root. It's the three of us, and we meet, and we go over, and we divvy up in the district what needs to be done, and we get it done. This, this session, I really feel, feel that we got a lot done, despite of the numbers. Numbers were overbearing, overwhelming, 57 to 41. That's tough in the House to get anything done when you only have 41 members. And, and I feel fortunate to get the four bills that I got through. Maureen worked real hard on getting, getting a real important watershed bill done, and, and we were effective locally. And, and like she had mentioned with the, with the capital budget, we had capital budget money throughout the district. And we were in the same boat as the 9th District as far as, as far as numbers, amount of money that we could spend. But, but, but I think we satisfied most, every, everybody in every, every place that we needed to satisfy. I wanted to talk specifically about, and I won't spend a lot of time, about 1499, the Aquatic Center. And I really thank Senator Walsh for running it in the Senate. She ran it in the Senate, got through the Senate. It got held up in rules, just like the bill two years ago that I ran. I ran the same bill two years ago. Got it through the House, got it through the Senate. It died in rules in the Senate, for whatever reason. And, and, and it didn't go anywhere. Last year, we were going to try again, but somebody, somebody, there was another legislator that wrote a bill that, that was in conflict with what we were doing, and we weren't really able to get it off the floor or get it onto the floor. And then, this year was a different story. Josh, you did a fantastic job in, in your work. You've got a good man in Josh Wees. And it, he worked it hard. We all, we all worked it hard. I missed a little, I missed three weeks of session because I had a heart attack, but then I came back and, and was able to get right back into it full stream and, and without missing a whole lot. And, and that, that thing, that was a tough bill. That was a tough bill. It ended up, it ended up to where we got it through again, and my bill through the House again, got it into the Senate, and it was in rules. And we didn't really think it was going to get polled from rules. We, we did not think it was going to get polled from rules, because two other attempts was in the same place. This was the third time it was in Senate rules. And, and we were somewhat lucky, I guess, and, and it was polled and, and went to the floor. And with the help of, of a few, of a lot of senators and with Maureen and Senator Holy out here on the East Side, the bill passed. And, and, and I was a little surprised that, that night when, when I heard that it got polled from rules. And then, and then even happier when, when it got to the floor and, and got the vote and passed. So, now, and of course, what some of the, some of the things was, it really, it, it sort of upset the apple cart as far as, as far as the regional PFD is concerned. concerned. So, that's where a lot of the conflict was. So, now, it's done. It's up to you guys to talk to the community because it's all about the kids. It's all about the kids. The kids need something to do. We don't have anything. I mean, I'm in Prosser, and I regret, I regret when our swim team has to go out there in the fall and perform in cold weather type aquatic. There's no place for them to perform. It's cold. You know how it gets out here with an aquatic center. That's going to, that problem will be resolved. They will be able to, I think as far as revenue for the city, it's going to be, it's going to be a windfall because you're going to get a lot of people from all over enjoying the use of that aquatic center. So, good luck in doing that. And I enjoy very much working with the council, with everybody, and look forward to next year in doing the same. And please contact the office on whatever you need because we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. And two things, and we might have some follow-up on this because this is an interesting opportunity. We talk in the abstract, I think, as a council, and for the past 16 years I've been on council, about our partnership with our legislators in Olympia. You two coming here really puts a fine point on how that is an active relationship and the person, the personalness that still does exist in the Washington State Legislature. And for you to share some of the details that you have tonight, I think gives people who are watching our feed and kind of some of the details of how that does work. And I appreciate you coming to that. Second thing I'd note, too, is in particular, the Public Facilities District bill, that fundamental question, should Pasco, do the voters of Pasco want to fund a regional aquatics facility? We're going to work very carefully, very deliberately, but also very decisively on that in the coming weeks. And we thank not only your efforts, Senators, but all our delegation's efforts to be able to ask that question of Pasco voters. We do truly appreciate that, as well as also the other things that Josh pointed out in that legislative session, and also what we're going to do next year and the year after. So, we thank on that. Other thoughts by council members. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you very much. You people are the ones who are our voice at the state level. And, you know, people come to us at a community level and expect some work to be done, expect to get some questions answered. And sometimes it's very difficult because we're depending on the state to make a difference. And you all as a team made a difference in here. And I think the kids and the generations to come are going to appreciate you so much. And you hopefully see the fruits of your work in the near future. I want also to say that when I first came on the council, I was really skeptical about our lobbyists and why are we paying these people this money to do, to do what they do. But I just want to make it very clear. You know, as a businessman, we are getting in return a very good amount of money for what we're investing in these people and what we're paying them to do. I've seen it myself. I want to, I want to just tell you that the times that I've gone to Olympia, you guys have been very professional and very straightforward on the realities of things because we don't always know what's going on in those buildings in Olympia. And for Gordon Honeywell, thank you very much. Brienne, I've seen you guys in action. I would not want to be with those people over there. I'm telling you, I mean, I was only there for two days and it was enough for me. But thank you very much for what you do. And I just, it feels good to come out of here, just knowing that we're going to be able to see good things happen from what you guys have done. And, you know, we have a lot of work to do. There's always going to be work to do. And hopefully, we continue a great relationship to move forward. And because Pasco, all the tri-cities, is, this is the jewel of the state.
Well, what I feel good about, and I'm sure Maureen, she can speak for herself on this, but in taking the bill, you know, people say, "Oh, that's a tax bill." And, you know, I'm conservative. But no, it wasn't. What we did here was, we enabled the city to be able to take it to the voters. And the voters will decide what they'll do. It's not us running the legislation. This has nothing to do with that. It may enable it, but that's fine. That's what this was all about. So, I can feel, my conscience is very, very good. I feel very good because this was your priority. That's why we wanted to take this on. This was your number one priority, and that's why we both worked so hard at this, and Skylar too, because of that. So, we, and we have a responsibility to do that. So, good luck with passing that with the voters. And we'll see what happens, and I'm sure it'll pass. It did before.
Councilmember Braz?
Just one last comment. I'm glad you're feeling better and you're here, and you're still at legislature. Thank you both very, very much. I know I called Ms. Walsh a couple of times. Thank you for taking my call personally. And on behalf, and I'll just say this personally, on behalf of those families that have low resources to travel somewhere, to take the kids to a water park, thank you very much for helping push this. I know there's a lot of families watching this right now that are looking forward to this, to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blanche.
Great wrap-up, Blanche. And with that, I think we're going to give not only you, but also your staff a round of applause this evening and thank you for coming out tonight. I love workshops. Thank you for coming. You can take off if you like. Thanks for coming. And with that, we're going to move on on a long agenda, and we're going to talk about some water rights this evening related to Burbank, a purchase and sale agreement. Mr. Worley, tell us about water rights.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council?
Excuse me, Mr. Yes.
Not a problem. Mr. Worley is on vacation, I believe, at the moment, so I'm filling in for him. So, got a couple of things on the agenda tonight. Before you, is a purchase and sale agreement with the Burbank Irrigation District for additional water rights. You know, the city of Pasco is growing, and with that growth, we are looking for additional water rights wherever we can. I think that the opportunity here is a very good opportunity. In your council packet and on the agenda report itself, it gave a couple of examples of annual lease programs that the city of Pasco currently participates in, in order to shore up the water rights necessary for Pasco. This opportunity is actually the purchase of water rights, which is even more important because it goes into perpetuity. The amount for these water rights is the standard amount that we have been looking at for some time, which is $1,750 per acre foot. And I hope that you find this agreeable to you.
And by way of comparison, I think the last time that we got some water rights were, my guess is this class of water rights, and they were a similar amount, similar cost?
Similar cost, yes.
So, this is, so in context, too, Pasco was behind the curve before. We're with the curve now. This helps us stay with the curve if we end up leasing, and it's a lease arrangement, but it's lease in perpetuity?
This is a purchase.
This is an outright purchase?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Maloney? Oh, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I will just note that we purchased a similar amount through the state just about a year and a half ago on the DNR property. And it was, I think the unit price was about 725, 750. I think it was 725 per acre foot, that one.
So, fairly similar.
But we bought a little bit, tiny bit under market. Market at that time was 1750. That's been pretty stable, as you've noticed, or noted, so.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question, and this is, this might be for Mr. Ferguson as opposed to you, Mr. Ford. So, when I was looking through the agreement, there, I understand that we're unlikely to sell or otherwise transfer these rights in the future. But under a quitclaim arrangement, normally that ends all rights for the seller. Why is there still a requirement for us to go back to the seller in the future if we were to transfer these rights? I'm looking specifically at clause 18 in the agreement, binding nature, assignment of rights. Can you speak at all to why this is? I mean, like I said, a quitclaim deed is typically just, they're done. In fact, it's basically by definition.
Yeah, that is correct. A quitclaim deed does relinquish all property interest rights. This looks to be, and I have to be completely honest with you, this is Mr. Kerr's parting legacy on his way. And so, yeah, so I'm not totally familiar with that, but I'm happy to get you some more information on it. But that may be just because they have right of first refusal, or there's some other reason why they would have another opportunity to repurchase those. But I don't know if that's what that's referring to, or if Mr. Ford knows anything about that.
From my perspective, this is not certainly a deal breaker. I do not think we're going to run out of need for water rights in any time in my lifetime. So, I don't see this as being a big issue. I was just very surprised to see something like that that's going to really, that could really complicate some of the things we have to do in the future. So, this is one more, one more thing we have to count for as we...
We'll figure it out and come back with an answer for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. Are these perfected, or are we going to have to go through that process?
I believe that these are perfected water rights with the Burbank Irrigation District.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to read their old lease, and that's, my vision's pretty good, but that's really blurry, so.
You know what's water rights when even it's, even it's a stump to attorneys a bit?
Right. Okay. I think that's just something we'll want to find out because I know that's a process that's both time-consuming and somewhat costly. But that said, water rights aren't, as Councilman Maloney said, they're not going anywhere. We're going to need them. So, whatever we can get, let's get it, and then work on the process. We need to.
Mr. Zabel?
I'll just note that with a municipal water right, once you have it, you have it. It's not like a private property, you got to use it or lose it.
Yeah. And Mr. Alvarado?
Maybe basic question, but just for me to understand. So, this is, I guess you could clarify if I'm lost, or if I'm not able to understand as well. So, water rights, especially in this, is just our ability to draw from a source that we already draw from, or just draw more. And then, the entity that we're buying it for, they're not able to draw that. What's the source of, is that Columbia or?
Yeah, I believe that these are surface water rights.
And Mr. Zabel?
Trying to remember what it's called, but it's out of what's called the pool. So, it's, could be Columbia or the snake back to a certain amount. So, it's all kind of drawing out of the same.
Yeah, I believe it's called the Wirra.
Yeah.
It's the, which is a particular section of the river.
Water resource, something area, yeah.
It's the section that's in front of Pasco that we would be able to draw from on the rivers.
Somewhere we already draw from.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or discussion? Generally, I think the principle of adding water rights to an ever-growing city or portfolio is probably going to be someone we're always going for. So, let's put that on the agenda for consideration. And if there's any clarifying information that staff or attorney can present for next week, we'll look forward to hearing that. And this issue of water rights, once you understand water rights, you get to claim you're done. You've understood everything in life at that point.
Mr. Mayor, would that be why Mr. Kerr retired? He finally got it?
Yes. One day on a Thursday afternoon, Mr. Kerr said, "I got it. Honey, we're going to, we're going on vacation." With that, we're going to go on to the next agenda item related to our financial update for 2019 and '20. Ms. Sigdell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. What you have in front of you, the report, there's two sections to it. One is your basic biennial budget with actual revenues and expenses. And the second section is just as an informational, so you all have it, of history of our fund balances. So, you know what's in our savings account to get us through lean times, or any major capital investments that we would like to do. So, on the first section, which is revenue and expenses, I'm very happy to report that we are pretty much on track, and with a little bit of wiggle room, which of course, with summer months are really where we have a lot of activities, especially with our projects, also on our overtime budgets. So, I'm really hoping for a really light fire season. And so, there is certain trends that happen with our budget where expenses are not always spent linearly. So, we do look at the trend. We usually look at the last four years. And even then, we're trying to smooth out some of the exceptions in the process. The only one exception, I would say, in terms of financial health, would be the street fund. And just as, and ambulance fund, of course. I just take that forgiven. But with street fund, usually most of the revenues that are coming to that fund are just subsidies of general fund. So, we do not have a process where we, where we collect a lot of fund balance. So, if the fund needs it, we come to council, usually through the budgeting process. Also, Public Works is looking into running that fund in a different way. So, they're working through that plan. 2019 and 2020 budget actually accounts for some of those changes in philosophy. But with the snow event of this year, we're looking into how the summer looks like, and we'd like to come back to the council probably in fall, September, and if there's any need for supplemental budget. And the other one that will probably stand out to you will be the Marina Fund, but that is really just the timing of expenses of the replacement of the docks. But overall, we're on track. Our first biennial budget, so we're always disciplined about our budgets, but we're looking at this very, very closely every day.
Questions? I would just note, the little five data point trend lines are, I've not seen that before. That's incredibly helpful as a graphical piece of information, and that's huge, tremendous value as a council member, just the general trend. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? We appreciate, Mr. Zabel?
I would just add, we, most likely, we talked to you about the street fund, and would counter that impact a little bit with, one thing about having two feet of snow laying around for a month is utility taxes are pretty healthy. So, there are the resources to transfer in there and kind of offset some of those expenses. And the trend line was a surprise to me, too. So, we had a couple discussions about those funds before we showed you those trend lines, so.
But also helpful from a staff perspective?
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, we're through Section D on the agenda. We're going to go on to Item E, and we're back to Mr. Ford about designing construction standards for Public Works improvements. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce to you a couple of gentlemen this evening that are going to assist me. First of all, Ben Anan from HLA Engineering and Surveying is going to tag-team this presentation with me tonight. And Ben's with me, been with me through this entire process. So, Ben's a heck of a resource. And I'd like to also introduce, hiding out in the back, Brian Cartwright. Brian does all of our, Brian, there you go, development review, both commercial and the larger subdivisions. And so, it was my opportunity to kind of bring Brian in tonight and have him here in case there are any questions. But again, Brian, this document, Brian's been very instrumental in working through the efforts on this document as well. And Brian will be able to use this as other staff will, as we kind of move forward with this. Going through this document, a little bit of presentation this evening, and again, trying not to get down into the weeds too deep because this is a pretty sizable document. But the opportunity here is, the opportunity to combine many of our resources that Pasco has used. So, the opportunity to compile all the department development standards into one easy, understandable document is really what we're here tonight to talk about a little bit. Some of the key highlights from this particular effort was, first of all, familiarity. This is very similar to what the other regional cities offer. I know the city of Kennewick, city of Richland, both have similar type documents. And the opportunity to try to put all of this together, I think really speaks to the opportunity to kind of see this in context. And so, where you might have one particular item that you're discussing, I think that he actually did that for me, you're able to see the other items as those items are affected. So, where you're doing frontage improvements, for example, you know, your water, your utilities, those type of things are all in the same document. And it offers a step-by-step approach, not only for staff, but also for the development community. And we'll talk a little bit about their involvement through this process as well. And again, I can't emphasize enough how big of an effort this really was. This is one that I have been working on since I, basically, since I came to the city. And so, this document will help that development community walk through their development almost in a step-by-step procedure. Again, we're trying to combine all these elements into one, instead of having them fragmented into different pieces of code and lost in those areas, and trying to look at them in their context with other type development issues and other type of development process. Not only is this a guide for that development community, but also for the city engineering, for utility and administrative staff going forward. So, again, how important this is, is basically being able to look at this and utilize... how important this is, is basically being able to look at this and utilize this so that we're all on the same page. And I think that became really evident as, not only did we work with operations staff, but city engineering, but when we went out to the development community, asked for their input on this document and how important this was. And we'll get into it later on, but I wanna emphasize early and often how this document is, is intended to be a working document. It's, it's a, it's, it's a living document. The opportunity to make changes in context with other development and design standards is really important. The fact that it's in here gives us that context and gives us that ability to make those changes moving forward. Where in the past, pieces of this might have been in code, the opportunity to have it in here puts it in a way that we can actually work through this and, and, and make those decisions going forward. There's also the ability, and what we did in putting this document together, to update the standards. And I'll let Ben talk a little bit about this, because not only did we update the specifications associated with those standards, but we also went through the standards themselves and, and talked not only to the operational staff, which again, has to operate much of this and make much of this work, but also with the development community, see if there's opportunities. Maybe there are things that are, we are requiring, and I know there were, that, uh, maybe void some of the, uh, the warranties and the, and, and whatnot that they have for equipment, for example. And it's just the change in time and, and, and taking a look at what we're requiring, revisiting that and making sure it works going forward. And, and not only from our local, uh, perspective, but also kinda bringing in Ben and, and having him bring in the perspective of the, of the other cities that HLA works for. So, I'll kinda pass it over to Ben for a little bit, let him talk about the standards and how important that perspective was.
Great, thanks, Dan. Honorable Mayor, City Council, again, Ben Anan with HLA Engineering. We're the contract city engineer for 13 municipalities in Yakima County, Kitahs County, and then also do some contract work with other municipalities and government agencies. Uh, wanna commend Dan and city staff, too. You know, the representatives and senators that were here tonight discussed about staff and how important they are to the piece. And the staff involvement for Pasco was fantastic from day one. We had internal workshops that we worked with, engineering department, with, uh, streets division, sewer, water. Fantastic input throughout the process, you know, really dove into the details and the weeds on some of these things, where not only importance from the engineering perspective, but day-to-day maintenance, you know, how does this impact their lives and what they do day-to-day, to making sure that it's not just theoretical and design, but construction and what actually works, too. And so, wanna commend Dan and the city staff for their involvement throughout. Uh, the updated standards, we talked about the step-by-step approach a little bit. There's, there's a whole chapter in this new construction standards that's dedicated to the development procedure, which in, in the past, with the 2015 document, there were some pieces in the document, there were some pieces in the code, and then there are also some pieces in the administrative order. By having a chapter dedicated to just the development procedure, it, it really brings that into one location and easy to follow from both city staff, developers, as well as contractors. Um, like Dan said, design guidance for city engineering staff, for utilities, administrative staff, for consultants, for contractors, it's, it's really a, a document that works for, for multiple levels. Um, the way this is organized, it is, there's a chapter on water, there's a chapter on sewer, there's a chapter on streets, there's a chapter on each one of the elements with public works. The first couple pages of each chapter really provides the basic design information that consultants actually need, you know, things as simple as manhole spacing in the sewer section. Prior to this document, where do you find that your maximum manhole spacing can be 400 feet? You know, it's, it's information like that in those first couple pages that are gonna be valuable for design staff, for consultants, and for contractors to where it's, it's easy to find, rather than having to thumb through ecology manuals or Department of Health manuals. Same thing with the water section, you know, maximum valve spacing, those kinda things. Then it goes to the other side of the table, which is, you know, pressure reducing valve stations. When are those required? Who's responsible for those? And it provides information on those as well. And the sewer force main design, same kinda things. There's real basic information, but then there's also some of those other things that come up from time to time in developments, that it points to that and, and provides guidelines and who's responsible for what. So, there were some ambiguities, some inconsistencies in the previous construction standards that we found, you know, things as simple as sidewalk widths. In some places, it's shown as five feet from back of sidewalk to the back of curb, and other places, it says five feet from back sidewalk to the face of curb, which is it, five and a half or five? And so, we've really gone into the details, cleaned up some of those inconsistencies, and make it, uh, one location and revise the details as well. There's some redundant details, too, you know, we've gone through these. There were a lot of, in the stormwater manual, the ecology stormwater manual, there are best management practices for temporary erosion control. Rather than having city details that are literally mirror images of that manual, decided to go away, do away with those in the city details and reference what, what the state's using, what ecology's using. Um, rather than waiting for an update and then relying on that update to make your updates, it just makes sense to have it in one location. Same with some of the DOT standard details when it comes to ADA compliance and some of these other ever-changing standards. You wanna talk by and, Dan?
Yep, no problem. So, as Ben mentioned, uh, several different workshops, three internal with, uh, workshops with engineering and operations staff, and I know there were multiple conversations with Ben, uh, and my staff, working forward. Each one of these next deficiencies that we'll talk about, I can remember specific meetings or last-minute emails or discussions on the phone, uh, trying to work through some of these, these issues. And again, I saw this document, as staff did, as an opportunity to, to list or directly input some of the issues that we were receiving, or some of the issues that we were dealing with, and then be able to resolve it and work together on it. It seemed as though a lot of the issues that we had dealt with over time were verbal issues, and yeah, we'll get to that next time, and we'll, we'll see if we can find some sort of answer. This document allows us to place those information, that information in here and, and gives us a, a working, a basis to work with the developers and, uh, city staff to try to work through some of those issues. Through that, uh, there was a public comment effort. We did reach out to the developing community, and we did get quite a number of comments. Some of those were very colorful, some of those were very pointed, but again, the opportunity to work with them and see it from their perspective was, again, very important. Like I said, most of the other communities in this region already have a similar document. This was an opportunity that doesn't occur very often, which is developing this document from the beginning. And that was really exciting to be able to work with them on that. As I mentioned before, uh, some of the deficiencies, Ben talked a little bit about PRVs, we'll get to that. But one of the areas that we had, uh, as a staff had noticed was utility oversized. We've been participating in, in utility oversized agreements for some time, but we really didn't have a great deal of guidance. And the opportunity to put this in this document gave us that basis of discussion, not only from a city staff side, but also with an administrative side and with the development community. We'll be able to further define this as we move on to better make this, not only this document, this section, better, but this overall document a much better tool as we work through this going forward. PRV installation, uh, Ben talked about, pressure reducing valve, for those that don't know. They're fairly costly based upon the size, they work in the different pressure zones, not only in irrigation, but in water, because of the elevational differences between one area and another. It was always as to, why are you putting this on my development? Who's gonna pay for it? How are you gonna participate? Again, the opportunity to get in this document allows us that conversation and that basis. If we find that what's in the document isn't working, it gives us, again, the opportunity to make those changes, but it, it, it sets a basis for that discussion going forward. Traffic impact analysis, I know that you hear about it, we hear about it quite a bit. How is development impacting the transportation system in my area or in my neighborhood? Again, some guidance and some, some ability to direct that and put that again, so that we're all on the same page. Outside utility inclusion in the approval process. One of the things that we wanted to do, because we were hearing from the irrigation districts or, you know, the power companies, those type of things, is, jeez, it would've been nice if you'd let us know that this development is going on. We've got infrastructure in that area. One of the things that we tried to include in this is a, a sign-off and a date in, in the document itself, in the requirement for the plans, so that they, we can see that they've had notice. So, we're, we're ensure that we're trying to make sure that we communicate with those outside utilities, that there also may be some infrastructure. And again, if we hear back that they've got nothing, not a problem. Uh, we do wanna let them know that we're working together on this type of stuff. Um, another simple one, uh, Pasco vertical datum. There was a lot of confusion, there's been a lot of confusion over the years as to what it is that we expect, not only our work to be done in, but how electronically it's been transferred to the city, so it's all on the same plane. That has been defined. Clarity and record drawing requirements for all departments. Again, that goes back a little bit to the vertical datum, because our, uh, you know, our IS department and our, uh, GIS mapping is all run with this. And so, that is a, a really critical piece to this document moving forward. And as Ben mentioned earlier, we talked a little bit, just the updates to the standard details. And again, this document is a living document. We'll continue to work through this document and work through these changes. But again, the important thing for us is, it's all in context together from a development standpoint.
This, this key slide here is, by the way, the most helpful for us so far, I think, it really gets to what you're doing, and we appreciate that.
Sure.
Did you have a question, Mr. Martinez?
I do. Are you almost done? I wanna let you finish.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can definitely jump right to here.
All right. So, there's a couple of things here, and first off, I wanna say thank you, because this is long waiting. Uh, we needed this a long time ago, and I appreciate all the work that's getting put into this. Appreciate the fact that, uh, you at least, if you haven't done multiple times already, uh, uh, offer the opportunity for the developers and other people to have more input on this as well, right? And I appreciate the living document, uh, that this is a living document and we can make changes. But I just wanna share something that I think is very important and, 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 you know, it kinda stems on this number four of the first chapter, conflicting provisions. And then, as I read this, you know, if the provisions of this design and construction standards conflict with one another, or if these provisions of these design and construction conflicts with provisions of city code or any other ordinance or administrative order of the city, the most restrictive provision or the provision imposed in the highest standard shall prevail, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, one of my concerns is that, um, many times, many times, if the city staff and/or, uh, even if the owner of, of land or wherever the work's gonna be done, um, we need to try to make sure we don't do something or make them do something that's not necessary. And so, my question to you, if, my first question is, what is the process to ensure that these people can come in and discuss these issues so that they're not making additional expenses that they don't need to be doing, but yet maintain a standard that's, you know, gonna take care of the liability of the city? I mean, that, that's the first question. And then the second one is, you know, how, how, or what is the, the process to make sure the staff, when people come into your, you know, up to the second floor?
Sure.
And say, "I wanna do this, I wanna, you know, uh, hook up water, I wanna put in a sidewalk," whatever the case is, that that staff is knowledgeable to know, to not just say, "Well, the, these are the standards and you have to do these things," without actually, you know, taking a look at exactly where they're at and what they're talking about, cuz it's, as you well know, we've been into situations where we've been into areas that it, it just wouldn't make sense, it's, cuz it's an individual, uh, si- uh, situation. And many of these people will get frightened by, "Oh, my goodness, I can't do this," and might even, you know, uh, might even change, uh, their opinion or their, uh, their ability to even, you know, purchase a property, whatever the case may be. But those are the two, the two big questions I have, is how, what is the process to ensure that developers, contractors, people that wanna make these changes come in and, and, make sure they're getting, uh, that, that they're not paying more than they need to, for one. And the next one is, how do we ensure that our staff is gonna give them the right information so that they don't go home saying this is not possible?
Yeah, then let me see what I can do about answering this, and this is, uh,
I know it's a long question.
Kinda pointed to a very recent, uh, I question, I think, that, that you have asked and, and we're continuing to work on. As a matter of fact, I received a call this afternoon on that particular piece of property. So, the opportunity from a development standpoint is, again, we are governed by a nexus and proportionality consideration for anything we do. We do not have the ability, and I've got plenty of people looking over my shoulder, we, we do not have the ability to overburden a piece of property with an improvement. Uh, on the other hand, there are certain standards, guidelines and certain standards for improvement that are required within the city of Pasco. I do not, at my level, have the ability to waive those. In fact, I'm not even sure who does, other than you. But what we do have the ability to do is look at a realistic application. As Councilmember Martinez mentioned, there are situations in which certain improvements can be considered as far as, are they realistic in this situation and how would they apply? And again, we're governed or, or at least guided by a nexus and proportionality consideration. I cannot have a single residence, for example, put in, you know, 200-foot of water main to take care of an issue we've got, and you'll see pieces in the, both the CIP in the past and in the budget that allows for some opportunity to participate with those folks, to help out with those improvements as best benefits a city moving forward. But with those considerations, uh, the opportunity there is to actually bring that up in discussion. We do have a design review team that meets on a weekly basis, on a regular basis now, and discusses these improvements going forward. Uh, the, uh, issue that, uh, Mr., or Councilmember Martinez was mentioning was an area that was, uh, lacking of other frontage improvements, and what I'm able to do at my level is look at that, make those determinations, and then in most cases, at the very least amount of impact, I'm able to defer those so that at some time in the future, typically a 10-year period, those will be revisited again and re-looked at to see if those improvements are at that time necessary. It also gives the city the opportunity, should, say, a larger developer come in, maybe adjacent to that property or down the road, or possibly there are other improvements adjacent to it, to go back and request that those improvements be done at that time, because then it does make sense. Then it is a real ass, realistic consideration.
Okay. Um, and, and I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
And I just wanted to, uh, you know, there's no way we can go through this whole,
Absolutely.
This whole manual and, and figure it all out. Uh, but those comments about, you know, the most restrictive provisions, that, they are kinda concerning to me, but more than anything, uh, I need to encourage that staff, um, you know, shows the customer support that, that our citizens deserve, to assist them in, in any way possible. At the same time, the public has to understand, we have to take care of, you know, that's our job, is to take care of our infrastructure, to ensure that it's gonna be long-lasting and it's gonna be durable. But, uh, again, I just, you know where, you know where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important, and I, and I would really appreciate if we emphasized on that just as much, because, um, it's just too hard for everybody to know all the rules.
Sure.
So, anyway, I appreciate that very much.
And we do try to take that into account. Uh, this particular gentleman that we've been working with actually called me again today to ask some additional questions, and we're happy to continue that discussion.
And I think it's fair than larger than the particular issue that might keep coming up. That principle of, as Saul pointed out, too, that most restrictive permission, I think what you're talking about here is this unifying document that does try and find a common denominator so that we do provide a consistent message. And hopefully also with that, there's a trust, uh, that also if there is a more restrictive provision, that that's also based in reasonableness, and if it isn't for some reason, that's something that we probably could question.
Absolutely.
And, and that, there's, so there's, hopefully this augments and improves the trust level with the developers, good community, community in particular. And I will also amplify, too, that Colorful are not getting feedback from those folks, uh, and, and at the same time also protecting, uh, I've heard the notion that it's easier to do business across the river, but also know that this can be played, uh, sometimes, too, and that, that balance. I am particularly appreciative, and I've seen it, too, that Pasco's needed to do this for a long time, and so this tact, uh, I think is gonna be very hel- for that, helpful for that, so I appreciate that larger picture there. Mr. Marti- uh, Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time echoing some of these exact comments, but, um, um, you know, I've, I've been greatly, um, impressed with the way the city's kinda moved towards a more professional organization in providing our municipal services, and this really is a long time coming, and one of those really key steps to be making sure that we have one consistent message when someone, when someone comes. We're saying, doing business with an actual other business, not with an organization that's maybe, um, has conflicting and, um, conflicting guidance on how to, how to proceed. Um, and I'm gonna be honest, this is probably, I think this might be the first time I have not read every word in an agenda package. I got to the standards and went, "You know what? I'm just not qualified to be able to review this very well," so, um, I'm very appreciative.
Congratulations, Mr. Ford, you stumped Councilmember Maloney.
I just dropped my pen and walked away.
And I won't say I understood them all, but I certainly tried to read them all. Um, and I'm very comfortable with, with having this process and the updates and revisions of this process being in the professional engineering staff's hands. And, and I appreciate that's one of the, um, one of the items that this kind of highlights, is, is moving this from, uh, into more into, up into a professional setting for that. One of the things I heard from you, and I, I believe I heard from Mr. Martinez as well, was that one of the very valuable parts of this was including developers in the conversations as to what comes next and as to what comes next and what standards need to be adopted. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. But I would like to understand, how do we, how are you intending to include them in the future and ensure that they know what changes have been made, when we've done a revision, so that as this continuing, evolving process happens, that they're not believing they have one set of rules to follow, and then coming in and going, "Well, that's not what I understood yesterday, why is it different today?" So how does that process work?
Yeah, and one of the things, of course, we'll make this, as we did with the review opportunity, we'll make this known to as many of the developing community as we can. Believe it or not, they all talk, they'll tell you they don't, but they all talk together. That being said, we understand, too, that you cannot create a document or have a document, make changes on Friday, implement those on Monday. And, you know, I've done this a little while now, and one of the things that I think is very important is making sure that there's notice to those changes. And there's time to consider those changes, even from our perspective, to try to make that change and then implement it the following day, the following week, even the following month in some cases. That's pretty severe on the development process, and it also has quite a bit of impact. You can actually go out and develop based upon these set of standards, have your entire package essentially ready to come in and bring that and present that to city staff for their consideration. And so my suggestion to trying to help alleviate that issue of surprise, which is why we are creating this transparent document, is to make notification ahead of time and give some time to, for that developing community to understand and to work through that. Because again, even if we are planning on making a change, we may hear some feedback through that announcement opportunity that might change that direction that we go.
So in this case, does this document formalize a process of inviting the developers to the table, or is this an administrative way that you intend to run business?
Both.
Okay.
That is the intention of this document. The transparency of this document is, let's both sit down, let's talk about what we've got. We finally got something that doesn't change based upon somebody coming in and asking the question, and who they talked to the last time.
Excellent. I would encourage to continue having the developers at the table as we look to make the revisions. Not that we have to, not that we have to take their voice as the primary voice, there's other reasons to do this, but this is important to make sure that we're doing it right together.
It is.
Thank you.
Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. And thank you for the time and effort. I know I've had many conversations with Mr. Cartwright on this one in the gym. His excitement on this is barely containable at 6:00 AM while he's working out. I really do appreciate the effort, and just, I just want to make sure, kind of, the 30-second snippet that I've, if I've wrapped my head around this, because I, too, didn't read all 140 pages. The intent of this is to bring in one comprehensive standard and package so that you can sit down with the developers, discuss things. You've updated standards where needed, correct?
Yes.
And when will those go into effect? As soon as we sign this document, assuming we bring it forward next week and Mayor Walken signs it, would that then be in effect? And if so, would you essentially grandfather people in, or anticipate that people that are mid-project come to those standards at the time being? I mean, how do you foresee working that aspect?
Brian has been working with, talking to you at workouts in the morning, hasn't he? Because he and I actually talked about this the other day, and we revisited this again tonight. And this is one thing that we'll actually work with city legal staff to make sure the direction that we are going is fair to everybody. My initial take on this, or my suggestion, as I talk with Brian if I can, is that if they have worked through these documents, as I mentioned before, prepared those based upon the standards that we had at the time, and turned those in for review, I think we're probably going to consider those under those standards. It would be pretty difficult to send those back and say, "No, changed last week, thank you very much." And that developing community has been aware of this document for some time. I can tell you, and Brian will probably shake his head in the back of the room, they have asked questions, "When is this going up?" and "How long do we have," essentially. So there is a bit of that on the development side. And it's a little bit surprising to us, because we don't see this document as being that much different, but change is just different for anybody.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you having, I guess, the foresight and hindsight simultaneously to, knowing that people will be mid-project and you don't want us to play the gotcha game, that's certainly no one's intent here.
No, I don't.
Do you have any way to, like a redline strikeout or compare and contrast, at least, or bulletized item list of what has changed substantively? Not, not just verbiage, but if you've adopted an ecology standard for BMPs instead of a city reference, is there some way that that is tracked? So if I were to want to read this, I could hold old version and current version and say, "Oh, jeez, you know, these are the 10 things that have changed." Is there a way for anyone to track that, aside from knowing the old and the new?
We have multiple versions of this. And when I say multiple, we're probably half a dozen in the last month, versions where we have added, created, subtracted, whatever we've done. And again, it's just for clarification. As I mentioned, to answer your question, we could probably get you a string of redlined or, you know, Microsoft Word documents that show the changes as we've gone forward. But many of these are also creating for the first time. The oversized agreement, for example, this is put out there as a beginning discussion, more than it is something that we've modified from the past, because I can tell you honestly, we haven't had anything at all. We've had a hint about it in code, and I do mean a hint, and nothing more. So the opportunity here was to actually get it out, make it transparent, get it in a document so that we can work it through. But yeah, we could probably, depending on the question, if there were a specific question, we could go back and track where that came from and give you the opportunity to look at those changes.
Mr. Serrano, is that interest at a personal level, or?
I think that's more on the generic level. Again, I didn't even read these, so I'm probably not going to read those. But to the extent that we expect people to be regulated, to make sure that, and I know you've had the conversations with some of those folks, just making sure that they're aware of what has changed. On a, look, you know, don't get into detail, don't kill yourselves, but certainly making it aware. But at the same time, I think having one set of standards, one body of paperwork, certainly at least, rather than chasing 10 rabbits, you're chasing one out of them, you know, might be the same 140 pages, but they're all in one book. So I think that's, it's helpful, and I think that this certainly can be used as a tool, and I appreciate this as the concept of the place to start from, you know, from, as far as a discussion point. So thank you.
Sure. We're, I think we're pretty clearly going to be heading towards wanting to do this, and appreciate that. Other comments, Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm very, very much in line, had that very same question, and I like to mention that, that I had the very same question written down, because I'm also in very much agreement about the continual to work with developers and having them at the table. I think that that's very important, and, you know, they're really the ones that are building our city and, you know, implementing the vision that we have through our zoning and things like that. They're putting, you know, the investment in our community. And so we certainly want to be very business-friendly to them. I do see that there is a sense of growing pains for the transition to have something that's a little more standardized, and I'm sure that there's a way of doing business that, you know, changes can be difficult, but I see this as a long-term good thing for the development community, because then they'll be used to go into this one source, and there'll be a clear communication, and, "Well, I heard this, and I heard that." And so I very, I'm very much in support of the concept and the hard work that's gone into this. And so I, you know, I'm not even going to pretend that I read most of this, because of the technical nature of it. But I, one of the things that I have heard from the community, the development community is, some of it is the standards, but some of it is also in the manner of which things are, and I know this addresses this to a degree, but perhaps you can speak to it a little bit more, and so perhaps where does the liability fall when there's testing for or installation of a specific, I don't even know how to call these things, you know, but a lot of the concerns have to do with the liability of, like, "Well, my guys are going to be building it, but the city wants to do this." And when they, you know, when there's that transition where those two entities meet, there is some ambiguity about the liability, who's responsible for what, and if my guys get hurt, things of that nature, does this begin to address some of those issues?
Ben, do you want to talk about how we intertwine the standard plans and specifications with this, and how that governs, I think, initially? And then, you know, nothing changes as far as this. I, you know, I'm sorry, I would like Ben to answer that. He's got quite a bit more experience, and where I'm thinking the answer might lead to is, you know, much of this defines the ability for certain licensed contractors or certain civil engineers licensed within Washington State to do work within the right-of-way, as an example. And so the liability, it clearly defines some of those considerations. But also the standard specifications from WASHOT. We've changed nothing in what we've done, we've continued, we adopted those, I can't remember what the year was, but, you know, it was quite some time ago, and we continue to use that. That's the basis for this document. The items that we've placed in here from a standard specification, or as Ben mentioned, even from a standard detail perspective, are slight changes that we want, or variations, considerations for pipe material, for example, in extra-deep sewers versus shallow sewers. Again, very technical, but it's something that we request because of the conditions and the operations that we work in. There's no change in this document from, you know, the responsibility, the liabilities from a contractor standpoint or that. We've changed nothing in here. But what we have done is, again, clarified, who can do this work from our perspective, who can actually do design work within the right-of-way? And I think that's really important as well. And I think, again, you know, that will lead to ultimately the best document that we can have going forward is, the fact that it is not, you know, Councilperson Alvarado, as you mentioned, you know, one person talking to one person, talking to the next person, but that person is no longer here, but they told me this. We've got it written down. That way, we're starting from that point, and we're working on it from that point, and I think the transparency will be really important. So maybe I jumped in there and ran right past the standard specifications.
There's a lot of good with that, Dan. So starting with the design, identifying that it's got to be done by a licensed professional in the state of Washington. So the developer contracts with a consultant to perform that design, a license in the state, everything stamped that comes through the door, that's the beginning point. Then the construction, like Dan said, everything starts with the State Department of Transportation standard specs, which is liability, certificates of insurance, all that's identified in the master spec book, which is published every two years, there's amendments every few months. And so a lot of that is not changing, there's no modifications to it. The part about inspectors, though, and when a city inspector is supposed to be on-site within 48 hours of a call from a contractor, because they're doing backfill that day and they need to observe the densities on the material, you have a visual inspector of the material tester that's contracted by the contractor, and so there's those quality assurances there. Ultimately, that liability is still with the contractor until that two years is up, from the time the certificate of completion until two years lapses, it's still, all that liability is still held by the contractor.
Saying some of it's external to this, and that this is tailored to some other, some other parts that are, do touch on those subjects.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Mr. Alvarado, anything else?
Yeah, and I also do appreciate seeing a lot of the graphics, and I'm sure the developers will also appreciate seeing, okay, this, these are the dimensions, these are the things, so I appreciate that.
So of course, workshop setting is to talk about things, so I think we've delved down into the weeds as a policy group pretty, pretty well, and hopefully some of the feedback that you've provided, I get the impression that this is something that is not something that needs to be adopted, money, it's not emergency to do, but that some of the feedback that you've gotten tonight, be able to, I'm getting the impression, bring this back in the coming weeks. Other thoughts, Mr. Mal?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that at our last council retreat last year, we actually brought this exact issue up, and so to me, it's, really seems like there's some accomplishment when, as a council, we're talking about this behind closed doors, and then you guys come up with a document, which is, I think, pretty much what we exactly talked about. And so to me, it's very impressive, and I just want to say thank you, I really appreciate, because it seemed like this is, needed to be done for such a long time, so thank you for doing all your work on this.
Right, and I would just clarify, technically it was open doors, but-
Okay, well, sorry.
Nobody showed up on a Saturday at our public meeting, but it's, but it's also a environment, and yes, absolutely, it's on the back wall, so we appreciate it, and it looks like it's really close, and we're looking forward to adopting it, and if there's any tweaks from the discussion tonight to clarify, hopefully the discussion we've had, it helps you make it even tighter of a process and document and philosophy.
Absolutely.
And thank you, sir, too.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, and I'm not sure how far you're going, and then we've got a 20th Avenue Overlay project bid summary, and I don't usually remember doing these on workshop meetings, they're usually part of the regular agenda, so I don't know where to go from here. Is this something that needs to be presented special this evening?
Actually, I've, Council, I'd like to introduce Mary Heather Ames, one of our senior engineers. She's going to talk a little bit about this, and-
20th Avenue Overlay. 'Tis the season for overlay, huh?
Yes. It's exciting. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the overlay, and I won't take too much of your time, but we have prepared a bid package and put it out to bid and received bids. We'll be doing paving from Court Street to the 182 on-ramp and off-ramp, and the project involves associated ADA improvements that are required as part of this type of a project. So we're happy with the bids we received, and we're excited to get to construction.
And about 300 and, or, excuse me, 440K?
Yeah, total budget is 440. The construction bids were at the 386.
386, okay. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for very briefly laying this out. But what's the time expectancy? How long does this project expected to run?
I believe it's a couple months. Do you remember, Dan?
I'm pretty sure, no.
No. I apologize. I think it was in the, like, six-week range, so I would say a couple months to be looking for probably some disruption, although we do have traffic control included in the bid.
Certainly, I take 20th every day, so I will undoubtedly be impacted by this very thing, so I'm very interested in how, very important project to get done, no question about that. But I am curious of what the disruption will be to the community, so if you wouldn't mind following that, but that I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, and we did write the traffic control such that they will have a lane of traffic going in each direction, so trying to minimize the disruption.
Not closed, but down to one lane of travel, I think.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I just, it's a good point. Hopefully it can get done before school starts.
Yes, that is the goal.
That's very important.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, then we're going to move off to miscellaneous discussions, starting with council. Anybody have miscellaneous discussion on council to cover? Hearing none, then also, I guess I'll give, Mr. Zabel's also moving forward, so do you have some miscellaneous discussion?
Not at the seat.
Well, then, see, that's convenient, because he was actually handing me the thing, because we do have a need for an executive session this evening, and since we've gone nearly two hours, I'm going to call it, what we're going to do is we'll do a five-minute recess, and then we'll do an executive session. The purpose of the session will be to consider acquisition of real estate, discuss litigation, potential litigation with council, also discuss collective bargaining strategies and proposals. It's expected to last approximately 20 minutes, Mr. Zabel?
Correct.
Be attended by yourself and the city attorney. And of course, I said also, we'll do a five-minute break and then 20 minutes executive session. So if my, I'm not going to try the math right now, but we're in executives, we'll be out for about 25 minutes and back.
be out for about 25 minutes and back.
be out for about twenty-five minutes and back. be out for about twenty-five minutes and back.